I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council of Order. Now, today, we normally have one of the council members lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But those of you who watched it at home two weeks ago, we have a young lady in our audience today, and her name is Leila Thivridge. And Leila, she's right there. Leila, why don't you stand up so everybody can see you? So, we had the Pledge of Allegiance two weeks ago, and when we all said the Pledge of Allegiance, the room was packed like this, but I heard this young lady over everybody, and it was really awesome. So, Councilman Godbout and I were talking, and Councilman Godbout told me, you know, we should have had Leila do the Pledge of Allegiance. You're absolutely right, so we're going to make up for that today. And Leila, you're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. So, everybody stand up, please.
Thank you, Leila.
So, just like we told you, Leila, whenever you're ready, okay?
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Leila. And just for context, Leila was here two weeks ago because she actually received a Compassionate City Award. Her and her mother, Tiffany, which is with her right now, they noticed an injured dog that got into a pond, and they saved it. And our animal control officer was called, and they came out with them. Because of them, that dog's life was saved. So, Leila, again, great job. Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Godbout.
Present.
Councilwoman Hersberg.
Here.
Pro Tem Londo.
Present.
Councilwoman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. We're going to begin today, even though we started on a happy note, we've got to take one moment to recognize Andy Spiezak. So, if you guys don't know who Andy Spiezak was, he is a longtime planning commissioner here in the city, but before that, he was also a member of our police department before he retired, retired as a sergeant, and then he was also the deputy mayor under Mayor Tom Taylor. So, he continued his service even after his police time throughout the city, decades of service. Andy passed away last week, so we're going to take a moment of silence to remember Andy, Mr. Spiezak, and all the wonderful things he's done with the city. Thank you. Rest well, Andy. All right, for announcements, presentations, I'll bring up Darryl Beebe from the Wayne Westland Community School District.
Thank you. Thank you. Once again, my name is Darryl Beebe. I'm the Executive Director of College and Career Readiness and Social Emotional Learning at Wayne Westland Community School District, and I'm excited to share with you all on today. We are leading with our compassion project, and we're excited to recognize three students on tonight. So, I'm going to step up forward, and then I'm going to share a little bit about what they've done. I'm also going to ask that their building leader or teacher will come up with them when I call their name. And tonight, we're going to start off with Edison Elementary, and our student that we're recognizing is Melanie Johnston. In her random act of kindness, Melanie helped her friend clean up a spill in the classroom without being asked. So, we're going to ask Melanie, come on up, stand by me. We're going to ask Mr. Tyler to stand right next to her. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Our next student is Jessica Matthews. Jessica, come on down. All right. Jessica is also a student at Elliott Elementary. Random act of kindness, a student was sitting by a tree feeling really sad. Jessica noticed and offered to play with her, so we're excited for what she's doing. Let's give Jessica a round of applause. And the staff member is Erin Darcy, school psychologist. Thank you. And then our final student is Faith Foss. Faith, come on down. Faith, random act of kindness, is showing respect and kindness to all of her fellow students every day. And the staff member that's standing with her is Sarah Huey. Thank you. Thank you. So, let's give our group a round of applause on tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you all. And they're all receiving certificates?
That's for you.
I'll stay here. Everybody smile. Thank you all for recognizing our students.
Thanks again, Mr. Beebe, and thanks to all the wonderful students, family, and faculty and staff that support them. Thank you. At this time, if you want to go ahead, if you're with the school, you can go right out, and they're going to do some more pictures for our Facebook. We're going to make you Facebook famous and put you on the city website. All right, we'll let them filter out. Next presentation today is from Len Fisher, representing the Inspire Theater.
Hi, my name is Len.
Hi, Len.
It just happens. I can't control it. Good evening, distinguished members of council, citizens of Westland. Most of you know me. I'm the Managing Director of Inspire Theater located inside the Westland Center for the Arts. I come before you tonight to inform, invite, and yes, inspire. We believe that we are the premier community theater in western Wayne County and perhaps all of southeastern Michigan. We are a volunteer organization that produces four to five shows a year, coming back after the COVID shutdown. We presented six productions. Three of those were to sold-out audiences. Our last show, we added 400 additional tickets, which sold out in a few days. The last six shows totaled over 4,500 attendees. Seventy-five percent of those were from other communities besides Westland. That's over 3,000 people visiting our city, dining in our restaurants before and after performances, and appreciating the quality of entertainment we provide. To this date, we have made upgrades in excess of $70,000 to this city-owned building and turned it into a warm, welcoming, and inviting location where patrons repeatedly return, bringing their friends and family with them. A plethora of five-star reviews can be found on our website. Our goal is to take this little-known gem of Westland culture to the next level by adding a much-needed wraparound lobby. This will be Phase One in our expansion plans. Not only will this be a welcome addition, but it will also show our community and visitors alike that the arts are a priority in our city. It was recently suggested that our theater only serves a small portion of our community. This is true. However, just as our recreational outlets only are used by a portion of the community, so it is with theater. This does not minimize the importance of culture to a community. Sixty-five percent of Broadway is attended by tourists. We're taking our lead from that. In the coming months, we'll be inviting community, businesses, and the city administration to invest in the upgrade of the city-owned property that houses Inspire Theater. Our pledge to you is to continue to produce the quality entertainment that we are known for. Westland, we invite you to be part of the future. Come grow with us. The best is yet to come.
Thank you, Len. Thank you. Up next for legislative update, Representative Kevin Coleman.
Lots of great presentations tonight. I'll make it quick. Thank you, City Council. I appreciate you giving me the time tonight. I wanted to come and check in with you and just let you know that our legislative agenda the last few weeks since the election has been basically nonexistent. The legislature is basically in a holding pattern right now. We haven't passed any significant legislation or appropriations. I wanted to come check in with you, though, and just let you know the status and kind of why that's occurring. The reason that's occurring is because in the election in November, the power, the majority shifted in both the House and the Senate. So, leadership in Lansing right now is just kind of sitting on their hands, waiting for power to transfer in January. I will be traveling to Lansing tomorrow morning on your behalf for a few days, and I'll let you know if anything significant occurs this week. But I find it unlikely, because, like I said, I think people are waiting for the dust to still settle here after the election, and I'm looking forward to continuing to deliver, you know, for our community, our city, and our schools going into next year. I think it's going to be a very exciting time for our community with the shift in Lansing. And I don't mean that in a political way, but I do mean that in a way where I think our community will have an even stronger voice up in Lansing. So, I'm excited to continue our agenda and move forward. I did want to also let you know that our coffee hour has not been scheduled yet going into January, so I will be either coming back in a couple of weeks, or I'll send an update with somebody to let you know. The issue that we're having is the library is doing their renovation, as we all know. That's where Commissioner Anderson and I usually host our coffee hours each month. So, we are still trying to decide an alternative location. So, once we have that figured out, I'll get right back with you and look forward to hosting those coffee hours. I also want to thank you for recognizing the students tonight. It's really, really something special that you're doing. We have so many great kids in our community who are going to be leaders someday and are really, you know, shiny examples of what young people can be and giving back to each other. So, thank you for doing that. And I just want to let you know that our office is at your service. Our phone number is 373...I'm sorry, let me start over. My cellphone, 734-751-6321. And our email address is kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. Thank you, and have a great meeting. And also, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays if I don't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. All right, now move to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item, following a motion, and support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Item on the agenda? Okay, on the agenda? Ma'am?
Thank you, council. Emily Baumann in Westland, pacing for, I don't know anymore. As I'm fully aware that one of the things I think about is that the power is in...sorry, I should just talk about agenda. And the people have questions about some of the things on there.
It's on the agenda.
Sorry. Can you speak to how it was decided to use the money for a park to help people understand on that part of it? I'm looking specifically, sorry, B and C on the consent calendars I'm looking at. So, those are my questions. And then, can you provide a summary for those of us who were not able to be at the meeting the other day about Marshall? Because obviously, I'm seeing that there was a shift of information from Marshall to this park, so I guess I want to understand what happened with the Marshall project, or was it...well, a while ago, when you guys had your study session. And then, where can residents easily find what a $12 million park looks like? Do we have an actual plan? And I apologize if I should have looked already, but if there's some sort of a plan or something of what a $12 million park will look like, because that's what I'm hearing that that's what that's working towards, I think those are my three questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll close. Comments on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Pro Tem Londo, supported by...sorry, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Aubrey, I'll just go ahead. Can you just address real quick what we went through with the study session and that information on the park grant?
The park?
Yeah, please. Normally, we would move that...did you...and we'll have him...normally, what we would do is we would move that to new business and discuss it there, but I'm just going to go and take care of that. It's a good question, so...Aubrey and Mr. Attorney.
I'm sorry, the question was, how did we decide to reallocate that funding?
Correct. The decision was, how do we allocate it and what did that plan look like for the new park on Tifa?
Okay. So, I would be happy to share with you the drawings that we have done. We distributed them at the presentation at the study session, but I would be happy to show that with you. It also includes a cost breakdown of all the different kind of components. None of that is set in stone yet, though. We're currently working on kind of planning a design charrette so that we can get some public feedback on the different components that would be included in the park, so we don't necessarily have, you know, a final number. It's kind of more of just an estimate at this time. We did need to put together as tight of a kind of plan as possible so that we could get in under this attempt to get in under this next round of funding through the Wayne County's ARPA allocation. So, they've kind of given us a verbal indication that since we're no longer going to be requesting the $8 million for Marshall, that they would be supportive of this project if we can kind of get it to them in time for them to review in January. So, this is kind of one of the projects that was furthest along in terms of planning, and we were going to...originally, it was a Tifa project that was going to be phased out in different phases, but, you know, we kind of determined that since this money was freed up from the Marshall project and also the county would be willing to come to the table, that we could use the $4 million Tifa had allocated in addition to these other pots of money and get the entire thing done kind of under one phase. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Fosso?
Yeah, I'll take the other piece of that, which was the decision relative to Marshall. Again, those who weren't able to attend the study session where this was discussed, as council knows, the city engaged in an extensive due diligence period, both as it related to the physical plant itself and working with critical partners in this project, which included the YMCA and Wayne Metro. We had great cooperation from the school district throughout this process, and the deeper everybody dug into this and changes to the building footprint that fit the budget, plus additional things that folks wanted to see but didn't fit the budget, it became...it was clear there was a big challenge in front of the Marshall project proceeding, not only on the capital expenditure, which was somewhat complex involving both county, state, and federal funds, as well as city funds. There were going to be ongoing operational expenditure challenges, even if you got it built, could you drive the revenue necessary to keep the YMCA and Wayne Metro and the city in a financially positive situation? So, in evaluating all of those decisions or all of those issues, the decision was made by administration that, in consultation with council members, that proceeding on the Marshall project was not in the best interest of the city.
Thank you. All right, I'll ask again. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Signal dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of Great Lakes Water Authority Contract Amendment Number Four. The Fourth Amendment lowers the city's contractual volume by approximately 4% or $150,000 per year based on historical downward water usage, and if approved, authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the amendment. Adoption of Resolution of Authorization to Allow the City of Westland to Apply for a SPART grant in the amount of $1 million through the Michigan DNR for the development of an outdoor community gathering and recreation space adjacent to City Hall. Local unit of government match without donated funds. Adoption of Prepared Resolution to Approve Expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act Appropriation Funds for the Tifa Park Project. Amount of appropriation not to exceed $4 million. Approval of Schedule of Regular Meetings of the Westland City Council for the 2023 calendar year. Moving to vouchers.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Signal dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business Item Number One. Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting Held November 21st, 2022.
Motion by Councilwoman McDermott, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Roll call.
Councilwoman Godbout?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hersberg?
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo?
Yes.
Councilwoman McDermott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
abstain.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Yes.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business Item Number Three. Approval of Agreement from Presidio Networking Infrastructure Services. Agreement is on an as-needed basis and will be valid for a period of 12 months with a rate of $170 to $220 per hour.
Motion by Councilwoman Godbout, supported by Pro Tem Londo. Craig? Walk us through that.
Yes, Council President. This particular service agreement would be for our networking services within the city. I use outside vendors to provide some of the heavy lifting for the advanced expertise necessary to run enterprise-level environment that we have. So, we primarily use Presidio, and we've been using them for well over 10 years now. We renew this agreement pretty much every year. We use them for Cisco switching gear and for some of our wireless work. The rest of the networking work is done by myself or my team.
Any questions from the maker and from the supporter? So, just for my clarification, this is just for advanced Cisco-level configurations, switch router configuration?
Yes, sir. That's pretty much what this is primarily used. Every now and then, we do have a project that requires some type of additional advanced networking work, and we'll bring them in for that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Sampe?
Yes.
Sorry, I'll get you. Go ahead.
Thanks, Craig, so much. Question in terms of your idea, what do you believe the estimated agreement, it says "as needed," what on average are we currently spending of this "as needed"?
Through the chair, we don't actually spend a ton on this. We try to keep as much work in-house to save costs. I would say, on average, we'll go and do about 10 hours' worth of work, so you're looking at about $2,000, maybe $3,000 in a given year. It's a pretty low-end service agreement. If we have got some technical difficulties, it might bump up a little bit, but we haven't gone significantly past that over the years that I've been here.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. Hi, Director Brown. The question that I have for you this evening pertains to whether or not it would be advantageous of us to have a longer agreement. As you had said, we've used the same vendor, the Presidio Networking Infrastructure, for over a decade now. Is there any advantage to us having a longer agreement, and how often are those rates bound to increase?
Through the chair, that's a great question. I'm pretty heavy-handed with our vendors in terms of working out discounts and whatnot, whether it's a multi-year contract or just telling them, hey, please, help me, help me on local government. This is a discount from what their normal rate is. I got them to reduce it by $15 an hour for the work that they have. The last three years, I was able to keep the pricing stable without any type of increases. They don't really work on a multi-year contract plan. They prefer being able to raise their prices every year at their leisure. So, this is one of those contracts I have to negotiate every year. There's other vendors that we have that I do push for multi-year contracts, as you're well aware, you've all seen those. So, I liked the multi-year, but in this particular case, it wasn't advantageous for us.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer.
All right, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Signal dissent, motion carries unanimously. Well, now, move to public comment. Everyone speaking for the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker, will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my right? Sir? Put the lecterns on. You can just put that mic down. The lectern should pick you up right there.
Council members, I would like to know of the $16.3 million that the government gave us for COVID, how that money was spent? The only reference that was in, it was in the email that was sent out by the mayor that we got a $4.3 million now rainy day fund, but where did the $16.3 million go? Is my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Ma'am? Ms. Baumann?
Thank you, council. Actually, the first thing I want to talk about, actually, is when I first moved to Westland, we had a dog and one cat, and it was a trying time, and we actually needed to find a vet. And we didn't know a lot of people around here, and we had to find a vet, and we got ahold of Dr. John Herman Mobile Vet, and it was actually when my cat was...we needed to put him down. So, we primarily use Presidio, and we've been using them for well over 10 years now. We renew this agreement pretty much every year. We use them for Cisco switching gear and for some of our wireless work. The rest of the networking work is done by myself or my team.
Any questions from the maker? And from the supporter? So, just for my clarification, this is just for advanced Cisco-level configurations, switch router configuration?
Yes, sir. That's pretty much what this is primarily used. Every now and then, we do have a project that requires some type of additional advanced networking work, and we'll bring them in for that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Sampe?
Yeah.
Sorry. I'll get you next.
Go ahead. Okay. Thanks, Craig, so much. Question in terms of your idea, what do you believe the estimated agreement, it says "as needed," what on average are we currently spending of this "as needed"?
Through the chair, we don't actually spend a ton on this. We try to keep as much work in-house to save costs. I would say, on average, we'll go and do about 10 hours' worth of work, so you're looking at about $2,000, maybe $3,000 in a given year. It's a pretty low-end service agreement. If we have got some technical difficulties, it might bump up a little bit, but we haven't gone significantly past that over the years that I've been here.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rakowsky?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. Hi, Director Brown. The question that I have for you this evening pertains to whether or not it would be advantageous of us to have a longer agreement. As you had said, we've used the same vendor, this Presidio Networking Infrastructure, for over a decade now. Is there any advantage to us having a longer agreement? And how often are those rates bound to increase?
Through the chair, that's a great question. I'm pretty heavy-handed with our vendors in terms of working out discounts and whatnot, whether it's a multi-year contract or just telling them, "Hey, please, help me, help me" on local government. This is a discount from what their normal rate is. I got them to reduce it by $15 an hour for the work that they have. The last three years, I was able to keep the pricing stable without any type of increases. They don't really work on a multi-year contract plan. They prefer being able to raise their prices every year at their leisure. So, this is one of those contracts I have to negotiate every year. There's other vendors that we have that I do push for multi-year contracts, as you're well aware, you've all seen those. So, I like the multi-year, but in this particular case, it wasn't advantageous for us.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer.
All right. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent?
Any dissent?
There are no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Well, now, I'll move to public comment. Everyone speaking for the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker, will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my right? Sir? Put the lecterns on. You can just put that mic down. The lectern should pick you up right there.
Council members, I would like to know of the $16.3 million that the government gave us for COVID, how that money was spent? The only reference that was in, it was in the email that was sent out by the mayor that we got a $4.3 million Now-Any-Day Fund. But where did the $16.3 million go, is my question?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Ma'am? Ms. Bowman?
Thank you, Council. Actually, the first thing I want to talk about, actually, is when I first moved to Westland, we had a dog and one cat. And it was a trying time, and we actually needed to find a vet. And we didn't know a lot of people around here, and we had to find a vet. And we got ahold of Dr. John Herman, mobile vet. And it was actually when my cat was, we needed to put him down. And I didn't know, it was very difficult. We just had a baby, all sorts of crazy stuff going on. And we drove to where he was, and I think he was in Taylor, maybe, whatever. But I don't know if everyone knows, but he's actually had an office here in Westland for many years, the mobile, the mobile vet. He was killed in a car accident over the weekend. And I don't know if you know that, but I just wanted to have a minute because it was very, it's very tough because we've been seeing him for, ever since we moved here in 2009. And I've seen some other vets, too, but he was so compassionate, and I'm just in shock. And I just wanted to share that with, I don't know if anyone else is aware of that. It was a Facebook post that my daughter shared with me, and it's, he's been, he was a big part, and I loved reading some of the comments and things like that about Dr. Herman, Dr. John Herman and the mobile vet. That was amazing. I just hope it doesn't go away because having him move around and make him accessible for a lower price, actually, for a lot of people, too, really, you know, made a difference because that was there. So, I just wanted to make mention to that because it was really, really sad for me. I also wanted to ask if you, Mayor Wallace isn't here, so I was going to say congratulations on his new job, but also if you could speak to a little bit about the process that you'll go through to select a mayor for the interim between, and how that's all going to work, and if this happens, then this happens, and that kind of stuff, so that, so that, you know, residents know a little bit more about that process, and that would be really great. And thank you again for answering the questions I had about the agenda. I actually usually don't bring up questions about the agenda, just, so I was a little off because I usually have that free talking, and I didn't. So, I think that is actually all that I had. So, I'm going to thank you, and I will, I guess, I don't know, do you have another meeting before Christmas? Okay. I won't say that. All right. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone on my right? Ray?
Hello, everyone. With some updates up here. So, first of all, I wanted to say the video from the Westland Police Department did, but Kevin and Margie did an excellent job on promoting that Westland Police Department's Special Needs 911. It's awesome because I'm going to get this application out to my work. Some people do live in Westland, and I think this is really great. I already signed up for it, and I think it's really good because, like I said, it covers a lot of different things. So, that way, you know, the police department don't know, I mean, unless the dispatcher is because of the HIPAA, it should be that way anyway. But it's really good. Also, Angel Night at Cross Point went really well. Practice, practice, practice. These kids did an awesome job, real professional. It was really good, and it had a real big turnout there. And also, the Christmas lighting is coming up Wednesday at 5:30 at City Hall here, and I'm definitely looking forward to joining in on that one. And also, I just wanted to let you know from our Disability Concern Board, when we all talked that day, I signed it today, is changing the name to a better name. I'm not going to say what it is yet. So, it's going to be going to the mayor's desk tomorrow. So, I just wanted to let you know on my update, we're moving forward to the future here. You know, even I saw on Facebook, electrical and disability and autistic people nowadays, I'm going to share, are living a life. I am so happy that they're being recognized. I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anyone on my left? Sir?
Hello, I'm Gary Kaufman, a Westland resident. This is my third time engaging in public comment at a Westland City Council meeting, and I hope I'm going to get better at it. I suspect a common audience thought when one rises to offer public comment might be, "I hope this person doesn't use up their whole three minutes." Well, good news, I'm not going to. I just want to say to each person on the dais, "Thank you for your service. Thank you for choosing a career in which you're working and formulating the best possible policies to improve the lives of the citizens. You're all special people." And that goes double for you, Officer Kelly.
We're quite fond of her, too. All right. Is there anyone else? Anyone on my right? Officer Kelly, do you care to rebut? All right. Anyone else in the audience? Sir? Yes.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to address the council. My name is Jamie Lowell. I work with advocacy and operations with cannabis retail company Meds Cafe. We've had some ongoing litigation with the city for a while, and just wanted to take this opportunity to get on record that if the city is interested, we'd really like to see if we could seek resolution without necessarily the need for there to be ongoing litigation. So, if that's something that the city's interested in, please contact us. Thank you very much. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Sir? I'll get you next.
My name is Josh Powell. I was, just wanted to speak real quick. I know a lot of people have the same issues I do as far as the power reliability in the city. And I was currently going to law school, so just for reference, that's why I'm going through this legislation. But the 2016 energy legislation gives cities some ways to push back against power companies who aren't fulfilling their obligations to the citizens through the Michigan Public Service Commission as well as legal action. Just for reference, I did some research, and Metro Detroit has the worst power grid in the entire country as far as reliability goes. And in our specific area, averages three to five days of power outages when there is a power outage versus most places where there's one to three days. So, I know DTE says they blame the wind, but I also looked up that, and according to NOAA, there's, we're not even in the top 10 as far as wind speeds go for states, so I'm not sure why they do that. But I just wanted to bring that to light because I know I personally had to install a $50,000 solar system just so I could keep my son's medical equipment powered in case there's a power outage and it happens. As of this year, I actually kept records, just this year, I've had 21 days without power in 2022. So, I just wanted to bring that to light.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Good evening, Council. It's so nice to see you all here. Chief Gerusik, thank you. Because if it was, baby, if it was you that whipped around that corner, I was sitting there on the corner that day. Do it again. Keep up, keep up. Make money for the city.
It's enforcement, not revenue. Enforcement. All right? Let's just be able to put that on record right now. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience? Any other citizen's comment? All right. We're going to close citizen's comment. We'll move to comments from the administration. We begin tonight with Deputy Mayor.
Good evening, Council. Thank Council President. Just a couple of quick things. Just wanted to remind the folks that this Wednesday at 5:30 will be Deck the City Hall Tree Lighting Ceremony, starting at 5:30. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be on hand, so if everybody would like to come out Wednesday at 5:30 for Deck the City Hall Tree Lighting. And also, the last day of compost for the season has been extended until December 16th for the 2022 season. And there was a question that brought up about the procedures and stuff for how to fill positions. The mayor hasn't firmly submitted his resignation yet, so I'd leave it up to either the attorney or you, Council President, to address that. And I'd just also like to recognize David Plight's here tonight from the Fire Department. He just got elected president as the union over there, so congratulations or uncongratulations depends on, yeah, condolences. And thank you. That's all.
Thank you. We'll move to the city attorney. Yeah, I would like you just to go and explain.
Yeah. Thank you, Council President. I'll give a high level on this. Vacancies in elected offices are addressed both in the charter, some ordinances, and also in the city council policies. In terms of how this is to proceed, once the resignation is effective, the city council is to take it up at the next city council meeting. So, it's not something that gets pushed off down the road. It has to be dealt with at the next city council meeting. If the resignation, the formal letter identifies January 16th, for example, as the date of the effectiveness of the resignation, council has a meeting then on Tuesday, January 17th, and it would take this up on its agenda. It votes, the majority of the council votes can be any resident who's a qualified voter in the city. So, it can be, it may be a simple process or it may be a complex process depending on the number of votes. And as I mentioned, even the council procedures identify how that physically gets done. Names could put in a hat, or a box, actually. You pull it out of the box. So, again, there's a whole dynamic that goes on with filling that. If one of the members of the city council fills the mayor's spot, then the rules are that that vacancy in the city council has to be dealt with at the two meetings thereafter. So, I think, if I've got the math right, it's like February 20th through 21st at that point, if it happened on the 17th. So, it's all kind of in a compressed timeframe, specifically, again, controlled by charter, some ordinance, and some policy provisions. But that's a high overview of how the vacancy gets filled. It gets filled by the city council.
Anything else for me today?
Yes. Thank you. You reminded me to look at my notes. Meds Cafe, certainly, their lawyer can talk to your lawyer, and we can have any of those discussions as possible, so. And I'll stop there.
No go-blu?
I'm trying to be humble. It's really hard.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fosso. We'll begin the council comments this evening with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I'll start by congratulating David Plight on your election and good luck in the future. I look forward to having many discussions with you over the next few years on a lot of issues that I'm sure will come up. There was a question on the City Hall Park Project. If we can get that slideshow that was shown to council at the study session on the city website, I think that would be helpful. I think there's going to be a lot of questions on that coming in the future, and especially now that the funding's been allocated, I think we should look at scheduling some of these community input meetings and so on and so forth. I'm looking forward to those. Also, you know, with the ARPA money, it was brought up. I'd really like to see council get together and do our own resolution on what we want to see the money spent on. A lot of time's been passing by, and we still haven't done it. Couple of council members have been asking for a few years now to get a staffing study session, and we still haven't got that. It's been being asked for for over two years. I know some of the council members wanted to see that, some of that ARPA money at least, be spent on additional staffing. Lastly, tonight, I just want to mention that there are trash pickup issues that are still continuing. Mine came five days late personally. I heard from a few residents scattered out over town that it wasn't picked up. I did contact Paul, and he reached out to the company to come pick it up, and they still took about four days to come get it. So, you know, if this keeps continuing through the springtime, I think we need to really look at that out clause. And if any residents are having issues, I'd like you to contact me directly so I can just kind of keep track of it. My cell phone number is 734-578-3412, and that'll be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe?
Thank you, Council President. I hope everyone's doing well. Happy holidays. We're in December. We're really close to a lot of festivities, so I know there's going to be a lot of different events in the city, so I look forward to having everyone come out and meet you and see you and, you know, celebrate together. I went to Frankham with over the weekend, actually celebrated my birthday, so that kind of gets me excited and the mood and, you know, talk about the festivities. No greater place than going there, right? So, I know that ARPA funds were mentioned. I won't talk on this specifically, but they're not all planned in terms of what we have allocated for, so I know that this was mentioned, but there's still ARPA funds remaining in terms of the breakdown. I'm sure that can be shared from our administration as well, too, but we still have ARPA funds available as well. I know that was mentioned. In terms of garbage issues, I have not heard any garbage issues, so if you are having garbage issues, I am available to be consulted with as well. So, if you want to reach out to me on my personal council page, it's just Councilwoman Melissa Sampe, or you can call me as well. My phone number's on there if you're on Facebook. I would like to congratulate the young ladies doing great things in the community. I always like to say girl power, but, you know, we do have males as well, but three great ladies, Melanie Johnson, Jessica Matthews, and Faith Foss. So, congratulations and thank you for just being an inspiration to the community. I love the smiling faces. Probably our favorite meeting when we get to honor them. Congratulations, Mr. Plight, on your appointment, and thank you for your service as well, too. I look forward to speaking with you. This was already mentioned, but Dr. John Herman, this was mentioned, but absolutely shocking, I saw this as well, and he was known for low-cost wellness and the vaccine clinics that he offered as well. He provided, you know, pets around Westland and just Metro Detroit healthy. It didn't matter if they could pay or not, so I don't know if we can have a moment of silence for him, or if not, let's just keep his family in your prayers and those that do see him. It was absolutely shocking and being young as well, too. So, again, I just absolutely tragic hearing about that. Want to do a quick few thank-yous. So, we recently hosted a Stuff a SWAT Truck with the Westland Police Department, supporting the Westland Goodfellows. I'm going to give Officer Margie Kelly a big high five, too, since everyone is, but she was out there in addition to the other Westland Police. Fire was out there, too. I think I saw a few, but just thank you so much for all those that participated. I saw a lot of great toys. I actually was speaking with Goodfellows over the weekend. They were doing the packaging, getting everything ready to go to Jefferson Barnes, and, you know, I asked them, "Is there anything I can do?" and such, but what a great event. It just seems bigger and better every single year, and, you know, Santa was out there as well, so. Wanted to congratulate the Norway Community Citizens Council. I was out there. They hosted their holiday tree lighting ceremony, and again, another great event in our city. I just love this time of year. Lots of great smiling faces. Santa stopped by as well, too, so I got my picture of Santa. And then, I just wanted to congratulate all the Westland City employees. They recently held an appreciation day just to thank the employees. So, thank you, administration. I know Deputy Mayor is talking right now, but thank you, and please share this to the mayor. What, you know, I think a lot of times when you have a job and you don't get recognized, so thank you for doing that. You know, I think it just goes leaps and bounds to show that you're showing appreciation and things that you do for city employees as well, and just, you know, showing dedication for those that have years of service, so thank you for that. I hope to see everyone out on Wednesday, and don't forget, if you have your holiday shopping, stay in Westland. Lot of great businesses, lot of ribbon cuttings recently that we've had, and a lot of good options. So, if you're looking for something, I feel like there's a lot of places here, so stay in Westland. Money stays here in Westland. So, I'll see you all hopefully at the next meeting, at events. If you need me, you know where to find me. Until then, be safe, kind, enjoy the holiday season, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout?
Thanks. First, I'd like to thank Council President for having a moment of silence for Andy Spiezak. Andy was an outstanding individual. He was on the first Westland Police Force. He was one of the first officers that was here when Westland became a city, as well as being the deputy mayor under Tom Taylor and serving on our planning commission for forever. He was, he's a wealth of knowledge and is going to be sorely missed, so my condolences to his family. And at his wake, it was a who's who of Westland that was in attendance at his wake and at his service. People flew in from across the country. Former Judge Bocus was here. Former Mayor Bob Thomas was here. So, people came from across the country to honor Andy, and he's going to be missed. I'd like to thank the residents and the Fire Department for their generous contributions to the Westland Community Foundation's Toy Drive. Last week's event featured the John Glenn High School Choir and generated a significant amount of toys and gifts for the Salvation Army. The Salvation Army still has many families that have needs during this holiday season, so if you'd like to help out the Salvation Army, they can so if you'd like to help out the Salvation Army, they can be reached at 734-722-3660. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. These are my favorite council meetings when we honor the students in our schools and we're just so blessed to have so many great young people. So, you know, again, let's recognize Melanie Johnston, Jessica Matthews, and Faith Foss for being caught, being kind. I think it's fantastic. It just shows that there is so much good in the world and I don't think we're going to have to worry about the kids in our community. If, if this is the trend, I think it's fantastic. And a special thank you for, is it Leila? Did I say it correctly? Leila for saying the pledge. You remember when we used to have the kids doing the pledge? I wonder if we can get back to when the kids visit us to be recognized if they can't maybe do the pledge that day, too. That might be a nice addition. Throwing it back a little bit. You know, in multiple meetings now, it's a couple of my colleagues have made mention of the strategic planning session for staffing for our public safety. And that was a, an idea that I had requested back in the budget session for 2020. And we had a lot of sessions for a lot of different things, but we never did have the public safety visioning session and it's necessary. You know, we're, we have communities around us that are doing some unique and interesting things and they're certainly not being shy about wanting to, poach might be the word, but, you know, fill out their departments. And so I think it's necessary, it's, it's quite beyond necessary at this point to take a look at, you know, what our needs are as a community, what our department needs are, and have our chiefs bring that information up. When we talk about ARPA money, we did spend some of that ARPA money to fast-track buying some engines, ambulances, patrol cars, things like that. And so some of those parts of that department have been fulfilled, but the staffing component hasn't. And so, you know, it's time for the conversation and it's time to have a plan. And, you know, sometimes those plans have, are five-year plans, but we are never going to know if we don't have that conversation. So I think it's time for that. So thank you for continuing to carry that torch. You know, I think Len Fisher and the Inspire Theater is such an amazing component of our community. Yes, not everybody goes to the theater, but we're so fortunate in the fact that we do have a theater. And I've seen Len on Facebook really advocating and trying to drum up some support for the renovations that, you know, that I think would make a huge impact in the theater. So, you know, that's another item that probably needs to be addressed when we're sitting down and looking at the ARPA funding. I would think it would be wonderful if we did kind of have, by way of our website, you know, a running total or at least a running list of all of the things that we have funded because it's not just ambulances and engines and patrol cars. We've worked on ponds. We, we have done quite a bit of things with that money. We haven't used all of the allocation, but, you know, dusk is coming on, we're in the twilight of our spending window. And so if people want to know, I think it'd be nice to have a fleshed-out list for people to reference. And Mr. Polite, congratulations on becoming your union president. I think you have a lot of work cut out for you, but I think you have the shoulders to do it. With that, I look forward to the rest of our city's holiday celebrations and we will see you in two weeks just before Christmas. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening and thank you, Council President. First off, I want to thank, again, it's, it's been said multiple times here, but the kids who come here and do such an outstanding job, showing what a compassionate city we are, from our kids all the way to our seniors here. Thank you to Melanie Johnson, Faith Foss, and Jessica Matthews for your kind and compassionate acts in your school and really being the ones that lead by example. As my colleague, Councilwoman Sampe, mentioned, when you're doing some holiday shopping, make sure to shop and dine locally here in Westland. We've got lots of things, lots of gifts, and lots of great places to go out to eat, but also places to get a gift card for if you're wondering what, what kind of gift to get. So make sure to keep some of your dollars here in Westland and support some of our local small businesses and retailers that are working hard here year-round, our Christmas season or otherwise. So make sure, as Councilwoman Sampe said, to shop local here. I just want to echo my colleagues who brought it up again tonight. Councilwoman Rakowski brought this up probably three years ago with the staffing study session. Councilman Godbout's brought it up. Councilman Hersberg bringing it up tonight. Thank you for talking about that. We do need to have a look at that. We need to look at the Safer Grant specifically and getting some of our guys brought over as permanent employees so that we're not losing them to other communities. And, you know, I think it's past time that we have that look on the staffing study session. And I think that we're all in agreement here on city council that we, we want to do that and take some action on that. I want to just take a moment here to give a shout out to the railroad workers in America. We have trains that run through here in the city of Westland and we have commerce that commences on rail here in the city of Westland. And the fact that we can't give them a lousy seven days of paid sick leave, I think is really incredulous and unconscionable. And I think that we, we need to do better for the railroad workers here in America and those who are a member of the railroad unions. And so I hope that we can negotiate something at the federal level. I know this goes beyond the scope of the city, but, you know, we, again, we have commerce that comes on rail here in the city of Westland and they deserve that, that seven days of paid sick leave and we should be standing in solidarity with them. Speaking of unions, congratulations to the new union president. Again, as my colleagues have said, Mr. Polite, congratulations on your election as the new union president of the Westland Professional Firefighters Association. So thank you for that. I want to thank our Westland Police Department for all their work that they do each and every year with this stuff a SWAT truck event. It really is an incredible event and even with the location change this year, a little worried that would we get, you know, the volume that we've gotten in years past being in front of Crunch Fitness and we've, they've bounced around a couple of locations the last few years, but this year it looked like, at least when I showed up and saw my colleagues all out there, when we were all there, it looked pretty full. SWAT truck looked pretty full. So thank you to the PD, thank you to Officer Kelly, and really everyone in the Police Department who works so hard to make sure that the Westland Goodfellows are supported and that ultimately no child goes without a toy this Christmas. I want to thank our Westland resident, Mr. Powell, for bringing up DTE. This has been an ongoing issue year after year and the statistics that he brought up are, are really critically important. Just to kind of build on that here for a second, Michigan ranks 45th in the nation in reliability in our grid and we're 34th in the nation in costs that we have to pay. And yet, year after year, we see DTE going to the Michigan Public Service Commission, trying to raise rates and raise rates and raise rates. We saw that they went most recently for an eight and a half, excuse me, 8.8% rate increase. And they tell us that they're out there, you know, trimming trees and working to upgrade our grid, but it, it all too often seems like they're not doing enough and that when transformers blow, they're not being proactive about replacing them. So thank you to Mr. Powell for bringing that up. Really appreciate you doing that tonight and we've got to do better withholding a DTE to account. Again, as Councilwoman Sampe said, thank you to the Norway Community Citizens Council for organizing another tremendous tree lighting event. Really appreciate all the work they're doing down there and it was really exciting to be a part of that again and to, to see Santa at that event there as well. And then last but not least, if you ever need anything from me, you can reach out to me directly at 734-890-2146 on my cell phone. I'm also on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott and I will be having a couple of posts upcoming to address some of the questions that were brought up here tonight in regards to the park and that project as well. And with that, those that are going to be celebrating Hanukkah upcoming, happy Hanukkah, and we'll have one more meeting before we get to Christmas, but happy holidays to everyone as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tem Londo.
Thanks, President Hart. Good evening, everyone, tonight. Also want to take a second to thank Council President Hart for leading us in a moment of silence for Andy Spiezak. As mentioned before, he's a longtime planning commissioner, our police, a police sergeant and our first detective, I heard from one of our police officers the other day, former deputy mayor under Tom Taylor. And as Councilman Godbout stated, I was at the wake and it was a standing room only crowd of loved ones that were there to show their love for him. He'll be greatly missed. Thanks to Len Fisher and those from Inspire Theater that were here. I was hoping they would do their, their normal routine that they did. I saw a packed audience. I thought they might do that, but if you want to see them in person, head out and see Boing Boing, a non-stop comedy. It's going to be Friday and Saturday, February 10th, 11th, 17th, 18th, 24th, and 25th at 7:30 PM. They also do Saturday and Sunday, February 12th, 18th, 19th, 25th, and 26th at 2:00 PM. If you want more information about their next project, you can go on their website, which is inspiretheater.com, excuse me, expiretheater.ticketleap.com. And the audience here, or excuse me, out in the lobby here, they have some of these flyers as well, so if there's anybody in the audience that's interested, please pick one up. Stuff a SWAT Truck, another fabulous event. New location, Councilman McDermott stated, we did have a really good crowd show up. I was out there for the majority of the time and we had a lot of people showing up, so we appreciate the people that came out and donated the toys to the, for the Westland Goodfellows. And I want to thank my girlfriend who actually went out and helped pack the, the gifts for the needy on Saturday with the Goodfellows. Mayor Wild also held an employee appreciation day here at City Hall on Friday for our hard working city employees. I thought that was fantastic. It was great to see the morale in the room and see some folks nodding their heads. It was just great to get everybody together and show that we appreciate them, so I'd like to see that continue in the future. Was at the Norway and Tree Lighting Ceremony. Again, another great turnout, so thanks to everybody that either had a hand in planning or attending the event. It gets bigger and bigger every year and Santa Claus was a big hit, so we appreciate Santa Claus for being there. I had this down as well. I'd like to also congratulate Sergeant David Polite from the Westland Fire Department on your election as the local 1279 to serve as our new union president. Look forward to sitting down with you and your rest of your executive board to collaborate, work together to best serve our residents, so congratulations. It was talked about at the early of the meeting, so in case anybody at home did not see this, the mayor and the city has finalized their due diligence in respect to the Marshall Recreation Project and it's the recommendation of the administration not to move forward with that project. We had some items on our agenda tonight that we moved some ARPA money. We moved $4 million of the $8 million that was previously allocated towards the Marshall Project, towards a new park plan that would be located adjacent to City Hall. The project would total $12 million with our TIFA Board, which is our Tax Increment Finance Authority, using $4 million from them, $4 million from our ARPA funds, and $4 million from the county. And what wasn't touched on, I don't know if Director Berman touched on this, but also on our agenda tonight, we had a resolution of authorization to allow the city of Westland to apply for a Spark Grant in the amount of $1 million through the Michigan DNR for the development of the outdoor community gathering space. So a lot of different funding sources. I think it's going to be a great project. I look forward to the administration putting that out there for the residents to see. I think once they see it, they're going to, they're going to fall in love with it. And I believe that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Making notes here. Hold on. All right, first of all, I'd like to thank Leila for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to thank Councilman Godbout for the wonderful idea to bring her back and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and, no offense, but I think she does a better job than you do anyway, so. Thank you, Leila, and I'll thank you again when I see you next. Be brief, David Polite, congratulations, as everybody else said. May the Lord hold and keep you, you know? But if you need anything from me, you've got my number. Do give me a call. Deck the Hall again is this Wednesday, so do come and have a good time. You know, we sing carols. I heard Melissa Sampe is going to lead a solo for us. She may or may not, we'll see. But do come out, it's a good time, as always, and I, I think we'll have some light refreshment after that, but it's always fun. With regards to the ARPA allocation, I will be asking the administration, we, we need kind of a fresh up on where our ARPA spending is, was something that I already talked about before, so I'm glad you guys brought it up. So we just kind of lay everything out and see how everything looks so we can start talking about our balance. And of course, we need to get proactive. We talked about it at the study session, the council did about, all right, what are our next steps? We really want to sit down and really get the rest of this ironed out so we know what we're doing. I think there's a lot of things we want to do. I mean, if, I think if you poll the council, there's $200 million worth of work we got to do, you know? So it's us being able to find consensus on what we, we think is the best value for the city and for the residents, right? So that's what we're looking for. And always, I think, you know, I, I've been of the opinion it needs to be transformative projects. I don't want to spend a couple bucks to fix a short-term problem. I want to spend a couple bucks to create a long-term solution. So we have to just keep that in mind or looking at it, so as a good stewards. With that also, I think we talked about, keep ears open, probably doing a charrette. No, a charrette's a fancy word of saying, hey, everybody come in here and tell me what you think about this park. Now, we did this a while ago for Marshall and we, we had a kind of charrette and we did it before and we had the advancing Westland, you know, city plan, so we're probably going to do some, well, real soon for a community input session for the park. It's new, it's contemporary, it's innovative. Some of it might be so innovative, it'll be a little off to you, but I tell you what, I like it. I actually went through the entire presentation and I think it's really interesting and I think it's really unique and it's a differentiator. I was disappointed that Marshall didn't work, but I also understood mathematically, it just wasn't the thing that we had to do. And I, I'll be the one to tell you, even though I was sold on, I was the first one to be able to take myself out and think objectively and say, it's just not going to work. So, so we're moving on the park direction.